There's sound on YouTube, Kirk?
Uh, there is now.
Okay, we're good.
Sorry, Craig, Jake Green.
Okay. Sorry, sorry about that. There did appear to be an issue with the sound. We apologize for the error. It is on now.
All right, City Manager Craig Owens. The item before you this evening is to consider an ordinance which closely mirrors the state statute related to nuisances. This will make a municipal offense, enforceable municipal offense for nuisances that in particular violate violations of the public health order that is in place to address COVID-19 and the pandemic response in our community. The, this community has had an excellent record of addressing the pandemic and we, we have had good results with compliance as a community in trying to successfully navigate this pandemic. Over the last month, we have seen incidents where the public health order has clearly been violated. And we would like this ordinance to provide a better avenue for our local law enforcement, particularly the police department, our Lawrence Police Department, to be successful in gaining compliance when we do find these house parties and these large gatherings around the campus and throughout the city. Our, our, the second item before you is a memorandum of understanding, which we would like to develop with the University of Kansas. It will allow us to have a joint task force with the KU Police Department so that we can jointly address these, these issues. We think that this will be an additional partnership that will help make sure that we, we do gain compliance. Our, our hope and expectation is that this will send a clear message that these are not, these are not appropriate activities, that they do endanger our community. The spread, the direct and the indirect spread of the community is a dangerous situation. And that is what we've all been working hard as a community and to sat the sacrifices have been made to try and gain that. We hope that this will become clear to those few that have been violating the public health order that is necessary to keep us all safe. And, and that enforcement action will never be necessary, but we believe that this is an important step. We haven't had an adequate tool up to this point. We happy to respond to any questions. We have other staff here and I believe officials from the Health Department are here as well to help support this.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Craig. And I believe we had two questions. If you wouldn't mind re-asking those, I think it was Commissioner Bulley.
Thank you, Mary. This is Commissioner Bulley. The questions that I posed were, which activities does this cover? Does it cover political events and protests?
This is City Manager Craig Owens. It would apply to any violation of the health order, any gathering of any kind for whatever purpose.
Second question that I posed was whether it would be feasible to include a sunset provision in, in the motion so that it would expire at, say, December 31st of 2021. I see this as pandemic related and I would not, I'm really not interested in making a permanent change to our code when we have emergency first and second reading and we're responding to an emergency.
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. Yes, we could add a sunset provision to this ordinance if that's the commission's will.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Thank you, Tony. Do you have some sample language that we could avail ourselves of if we make that decision?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. Yes, I do. I can retrieve that now or we can, we can discuss that later.
Thank you, Tony. This is Commissioner Bulley. I think we should just discuss it later. I may be the only one who's interested.
This is Mayor Nanda. What other questions do other commissioners have at this time?
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I want to echo something that Commissioner Bulley said earlier. I'll be sure and give him credit, which is to thank staff for being so responsive to our concerns on Tuesday. That meeting ended at midnight and staff has been able to come up with a fair idea, interesting solution in just a couple of days. So I do want to thank them for that. I did want to clarify however, and I don't know, this would perhaps be more for Dan Partridge with Health Department. The city manager said this would be about anything violating the health order. I understood that to be kind of three parts, which was the number of people in the gathering, the use of social distancing, the six feet and masks. Do you see those things as equal in importance? Or if you see one as more important? I'm not sure quite how to say.
Commissioner Shipley, this is Dan Partridge, Director of Lawrence Public Health. And I think I can provide a partial answer to that. The public health order does have a mask gathering limitation, a requirement for a mask and, and the social distancing, distancing pieces along with restrictions around establishments that sell alcohol. Those are kind of the three tenants of the order. I'm not, I think the other piece around enforcement of that public health order is really more of a legal question because as I'm understanding it, not all three of those are, are equally easily enforced through this process. So I'm going to turn it back to Tony Wheeler or somebody else to maybe manage that part.
Attorney Tony Wheeler. Yes, the, the ordinance language says that it's unlawful to maintain a public nuisance. And then a public nuisance is knowingly causing or permitting a condition to exist which injures or endangers the public health, safety or welfare. I would say that this ordinance is probably primarily directed at the large gatherings and that will, that will be the focus of enforcement, I think preliminarily. And Chief Brixius is on the call as well and he may, he may wish to respond to that.
Thank you, Tony. Interim Chief Anthony Brices. Yeah, so in some of the statutes that we were previously discussing that were actually pertinent directly to the health order in chapter, one of them was listed in chapter 48 and the Attorney General's Office gave some clear guidance that did not want law enforcement in the assisting of the masks. So if we were looking at that just purely as its only element, that would not be something that we would be enforcing. I think this is primarily directed at these large gatherings where people are very close in contact.
Commissioner Larson here had a question. Since we basically talked about a narrow scope of what this is intended to prevent, should we look at narrowing the, the language within the ordinance to reflect that? I mean, I think it goes hand in hand with Commissioner's bully question about having a sunset provision. So should we look at narrowing that definition and what ramifications would that have?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. Well, we drafted it in this manner because it tracks the state statute and we believe that there is appropriate case law that supports it. And this was our best recommendation with the short amount of time that we had to prepare this. I think that the draft ordinance as written will be sufficient and law enforcement have discretion to on their enforcement measures. And so I think that with those things combined, I would recommend the ordinance as drafted.
Commissioner Larson, I do. I, I am always concerned when I, when I hear this is what the intent of the ordinance is, but it doesn't seem to be clearly detailed in that order. So, so I'm having a hard time with that. And maybe we can just have more discussion from other commissioners.
Commissioner Shipley, I think just to piggyback on that, I seem to recall fairly recently as having a little bit of a legal lesson on intent. And I don't know, especially since we're doing this right now and maybe considering having a sunset. If Tony could talk to us about intent and the way it's applied.
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. When a court is interpreting a statute, they will, the court will look at the plain, plain language in the statute. They will go to intent only if there is any particular language in the ordinance that is ambiguous. So that, that is how courts review intent.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. I don't do criminal law all the time. I, I have, I have been a prosecutor before for a municipality and Tony might, might correct me on this as I, as I say this, but so this language mirrors KSA 216402. So, so as if we do nothing, there's statutes on the books and it's a state, if someone violates it, they are violating state law. And so if tonight there was a party and we did not pass this, the, the police could enforce 216402, the exact language that we have before us tonight. The difference would be that if it's not a municipal code, the LPD would have two choices. They would have to arrest somebody or they would have to gather information and send it to the DA who would then consider the affidavit and, you know, four to six to 10 days later, issue an order. By making this a municipal violation, we add the ability for them, for the LPD and KU along with the memo to write a ticket, write a ticketable offense if it's a municipal code. So rather than just having you choose between taking information and worrying about it later or arresting somebody, this gives them the ability to issue a ticket. So as I listen to this, we're not creating a new crime and we're not creating a new, you know, some, making something illegal that wasn't currently legal. We're just allowing it to be processed through our municipal code. At least that's my understanding. Tony, am I close on that?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. Yes, Vice Mayor, you are 100% accurate on that point. The other advantage of making it a municipal citation is this will be then able to be adjudicated in municipal court as opposed to district court. We heard from the district attorney yesterday that if we were to rely on the state statute only, in addition to the time that it takes to forward the complaint and get the case started, it will take the court several months before the case will be set for a hearing. And by going through municipal court, it should be handled in a, in a more expeditious manner.
Commissioner Larson here had a question about will this ordinance allow us to actually require the party to disperse from, from the property until they're in compliance?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, I would refer or defer to Chief Brixius to talk about the approach they plan to take. I believe that our efforts are going to be to obtain compliance cooperatively at first.
Interim Chief Anthony Brice is, Tony is correct. The direction has already been given to staff and we have issued a memo regarding the state statute is to use this state statute to gain compliance. If we were not able to gain compliance, we could then issue a citation. We could arrest, but that has been discouraged, strongly discouraged. We, the goal is to not have these events. I don't think it's to punish anybody. It's certainly not to arrest anybody or to engage in a confrontation with a great amount of people. And it applies specifically to the person who's in control of the event or the residents. And so if we would determine if it was applicable or if it was reasonable to try and break up a party, it does take quite a lot of amount of people to do that. So usually we try and to gain compliance when we do that. Otherwise we could bring in a large amount of people. We can also address the offender on the following day when there's not several hundred people around.
Mr. Larson, thank you. So would this look something like when you handle a noise complaint where you go to the operation and, and tell them to turn the music down and they turn it down and then you get a call a half an hour later and the same thing is happening? Would there be warnings given at the, at the event to allow people to comply? Or would this just be a situation where you would go there, you would actually ticket the person, whoever needs to be ticketed and you would just try to disperse it then? Would there be opportunities to come into compliance? Is that what we're looking at?
So very similar to the noise complaint where there would be a warning with one exception. The way our noise complaint works is that we would have to be called back, but with, what we're using this as is the warning is then immediate. So they immediately begin complying and assisting us with having the party cease. But they would have the opportunity to do that prior to any citation.
Mr. Larson, again, so if, if they don't immediately comply, would there be tactics used to try to get them, get the, the folks to kind of move, move out and move away to come into compliance? Or I mean, what sort of timeframe are you talking about to allow them to come into compliance?
Because the ord, sorry, Interim Chief Anthony Brices. So because the ordinance is, is fairly specific towards the person holding the event, the renter, the homeowner. We, we, we would use a number of police officers to help encourage the crowd to go away. That's typically what happens with noise complaints as well. That is typically successful. Every so often it is not. In this particular case though, if, if they decline to have the party cease and people decline move, that's probably when we would be in the citation process. And depending on how that goes afterwards would depend on how we'd handle it. I, I wish I could be more specific and give you every instance, but it, it becomes a very dynamic situation.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Larson. So what I'm, I'm think I'm hearing you say is that if you get called to a situation or you are aware of a situation, you go to this household, you are going to, your, your, the police officers are going to make every effort to disperse the crowd at that time versus coming back if they've been given a warning?
Interim Chief Anthony Brice, that is correct and will assess how reasonable and how feasible that is. And because the people, the person that we would be able to attain and our ability to get to them matters as far as making compliance or issuing a citation. If it becomes a situation where we did not believe that was appropriate at the moment, where we were able to do that, to identify that person, while we would still get, encourage the crowd to leave and try to use reasonable means to do that. It may end up that we come back and do a follow-up investigation to make sure that those, those people who were involved are cited.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, I want to follow up on Commissioner Larson's line of discussion there. In the MOU or in the discussions you're having with KUPD, in the scenarios we've talked about, how, how do you see their role or how will they collect information that they need?
Interim Chief Anthony Brice is, so the partnership with KU allows us additional workforce, workforce power. This is probably going to be an assignment that's outside our normal patrol because it takes several people to do. Additionally, KU Police has the direct link to the university and the university would be at least reviewing under their student code of conduct. So it provides an additional enforcement arm that someone throwing an event may be more sensitive.
Commissioner Larson, I had another question for Anthony. Is when we get calls on this or we are aware of a situation where this is happening and we're going to attempt to do enforcement, are we going to have a member of the KU Public Safety Department with us?
Interim Chief Anthony Brice is, in the event that it's a time that we're going to run the task force, because this task force won't be run 24 hours a day, we would, but it will, it will not be a situation where we would necessarily call them every time, but we would still have the information, could pass that on to them at a later point. For instance, to not, for example, tonight, the task force is not up and running, but the city of Lawrence police officers can still enforce this.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. I guess, could you explain the task force? I'm, I'm just, I'm a little fuzzy on that. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Interim Chief Anthony Brice is, in this particular case, it's, it's KU Police and Lawrence Police Department combining their resources to, to make sure that we are responding together collectively. And then through, through our collective efforts, we'll also be able to give information to the University of Kansas and Health Department.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, again, so is this task force being put together in response to the MOU that we're, we're going to have with KU or is this something totally that we've always had?
Interim Chief Anthony Brice, this is specific to these events. However, we have had task force with KU before. Previously, if my recollection is right, it was due to underage drinking at some of the bars. So it's not uncommon for us to work with the University of Kansas Police and this, this task force is, so while it's a new thing and specific to this event, it's not new. The current, so the event type of event happening is not new.
Thank you, Anthony.
Commissioner Shipley, sorry, Mayor. Just one more thing since we've got the chief in the hot seat here. I, I hear you saying that, that you will need some extra help and that KU will be part of that, but how can we make sure that we give you all the tools that you need? I am apologetic that that's not what happened previously and that your officers were caught in that situation. And I want to be sure that we're giving you everything you need if, if we adopt this.
Interim Chief Anthony Brice is, so admittedly, this is a very unfamiliar statute to almost all of us. It's not one that I have ever seen before or, or used. But the difference is, is we were relying off of statutes that were outlined in the health orders, whether it was the governor's orders or the county health orders. And those were not really clear about the criminal and civil side of it. And so part of my concern was stopping and detaining someone or forcing identification and into a situation where we may get into arrest or even a physical confrontation without knowing for sure that we, there was a criminal element there. And so with the addition of this statute or learning more about this statute, it's in chapter 21, which is specific to the criminal code. So I feel much more comfortable about that. Again, you know, I stated the other night that this is not a really a space that we would like to be in and I, I stand by that statement. But we are, we are going to be judicious with how we do this. We're going to be fair and reasonable and give every opportunity of compliance. And it's not our intent to go around and handing out citations or arresting people, but we do have that element if we need to, to make sure that they But we do have that element if we need to to make sure that the community is safe.
Commissioner Larson, again, I want to go back to, you know, my earlier discussion regarding whether this ordinance should be more narrowly focused. And I would like to hear more about, I mean, it's obvious we, our staff has stated that this is geared towards enforcing the health orders that are that are in place right now. Is that should the should the ordinance reflect that specifically that this is targeted towards? If you violate the public health order, and I know it's got words in there regarding public health, safety and welfare. But if we are focusing only on the health orders that are in place right now, should the language for such as that be actually part of this ordinance?
interim chief Anthony Bricks, I'm sorry, Tony, did you want to speak to that?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, I will ask Supervising City Prosecutor Elizabeth Hafoka to to jump in. There will be, there will be elements that will have to be proved in order for a conviction to occur and it will it will be tied to establishing that there was a threat to the public health and safety that references the orders. So if if Elizabeth could step in and explain that just a little bit, I think that will reassure the commission.
Good evening. This is Supervising City Prosecutor Elizabeth Hafoka. I did some research earlier on this particular language. And I did find a case that applied to a grain elevator in a city in Kansas from 2013. And the court in that case looked at a public nuisance ordinance with similar language to ours and upheld a conviction. The argument presented in that case was that the language was unconstitutionally void for vagueness as it applied to this grain elevator. And the court specifically addressed the language of injures or endangers the public health, safety or welfare and found that those words are commonly used previously judicially defined and having settled meaning in the law. Injure means to cause any harm or damage. Endanger means to place in circumstance where injury may occur. Black's Law Dictionary defines public health as the health of the community at large. It defines public safety as the welfare and protection of the general public, usually expressed as a governmental responsibility. And it defines public welfare as a society's well being in matters of health, safety, order, morality, economic and politics. They found that the ordinance sufficiently gave a warning and fair notice as to the prohibited conduct in light of common understanding and practice. And it protected against arbitrary enforcement of the law enforcement officers because they had to consider how the community was affected, how the public was affected, not just their own subjective judgments or unique feelings about the condition. So those would be the arguments that we would make in court if someone raised that concern. Also, in looking at the emergency order of the local health officer on page one, it does say, whereas such conditions endanger health, safety and welfare of persons and property within the border of Douglas County, Kansas. And tying those things together, we would argue to the court that it is not unconstitutionally vague. And we would point the court to this particular case law, which seems to support the language of this ordinance.
This is Vice Mayor Finkel. I just following up for a second on that. If we change the language of the ordinance with that open up, open us up for a lawyer to make an argument that the added language made it vague?
I think that would depend on what change you make to the language. So it's possible, depending on what those changes are. And if you wanted to be more specific, then I think we could look at that language. If you wanted to change the language to not refer to public health, safety or welfare, then it would make it more difficult for us to rely on this particular case law in support of the argument that the ordinance is constitutional.
This is Renanda, is it feasible to say public health period and pull out safety and welfare? And still rely on those definitions within the case law?
Well, that would, I could make those arguments to the court. I don't know how the court would rule because I'm not aware of case law that just takes that specific language of the ordinance without the rest. So it's possible. But I I couldn't say for certain what the ruling would be from the court.
This is Mayor Renanda, that's reasonable response. Can Tony, would you mind talking about what the definition of maintain is?
Maintaining as used in this, excuse me, City Attorney Tony Wheeler, maintaining would be allowing it to exist. For instance, as it relates to a large party, having a large party, having a large gathering greater than the order permits. That would be maintaining.
This is Mayor Renanda, so there it's not like a there aren't time based factors or being asked once not to and then and then refusing to comply like maintain isn't the same. It seems like there are two definitions of maintain that could possibly be interpreted from this.
Tony Wheeler, City Attorney. Well, obviously, if the police officers arrive and the party appears to be dispersing, then that would not they would not have the basis to say that the that it was being maintained. So and as we heard from Chief Brixus, there is going to be the opportunity for compliance and education. And if the officers return and the situation remains, there's certainly a strong case for that being being maintained.
This is Mayor Renanda, so then would that first a warning and then continuing the behavior have to occur in order for maintain to be satisfied?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, that's our recommendation. I believe that's the approach that the officers are taking. There could be a situation, however, as I said, that if the officers are there for extended period of time and there's no evidence that it is dispersing, that an allegation or a charge could be made that it was being maintained.
This is Mayor Renanda, thank you. I also wanted to ask if this would apply. So for example, we allowed the permit, the alcohol permit for the car show. Would this also be applied if they go to the number of folks past the recommendation to that event?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, yes, if the order remains in place and the event attracts larger than the amount that is permitted by the current health order, I believe that that would be subject to this ordinance if it's passed.
This is Mayor Renanda, is that based on, so for example, if everyone there was wearing the mask and maintaining social distancing, but that number was larger than what was allowed within the ordinance or within the the health order? Would that then apply?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, well, if there is the ability to maintain social distancing and there is the mask wearing such that the the transmission is reduced, then I think that perhaps that that would not rise to the level. And I think it will have to be evaluated, the circumstances will have to be evaluated at the time.
This is Mayor Renanda again. I I wanted to know if, so let's say, for example, there is a house party and law enforcement does reply or respond to that. And at the house party, one individual who is a renter is somehow identified in that space. Would only that individual then who was identified be ticketed? So one ticket out of 100 kids at the party, is that what I'm understanding?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, yes, the intention is to not try to ticket everyone that's in attendance, but rather to direct it to the person who is responsible for for the gathering, the the tenant that threw the party. And those people that are occupying the the structure where the party is existing.
This is Mayor Renanda, would there be any attempt to gather information on the other individuals in attendance in order to pass that information along to KU so that they can engage in measures for for those students? I don't know who that's for, whether that's for chief or interim chief.
Sorry, interim chief Anthony Bricks is so the order or the the ordinance, the law is pretty specific to who it applies to. We could, so as we've talked about a little before, we want to be lawful in our stops of people. And so there are other ordinances that could apply where we stop and maybe identify some folks. But the reality of it is also is that in a very large party, especially beginning to disperse, are even if we have a lawful authority, we simply wouldn't most likely have the staffing to try and stop everybody who was at that party. So there may be some very specific incidences that are based on conduct of the person that would allow us and would would lead us to stop them. But the likelihood of us trying to identify 50 people is is just not, it's not a reality at that time of night with a large gathering of that size.
This is Mayor Renanda, thank you. Are there other questions from the commission before we go to public comment?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, I do have another question. So is, again, I want to just go back to this idea of narrowing this ordinance to be more targeted towards what our intent is. Is there any interest or any discussion or maybe, and Tony, I would ask you to pipe in on this, if this is even possible, is that last part of A of the ordinance, instead of using the words to exist, which injures or endangers public health, safety or welfare that we put in their language that says that violates the the emergency public health order that's in force at the time? If there's not a a public health order in effect, then the the ordinance would not be applicable.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. We we discussed this, we thought this did narrow it down compared to what's in the health order. The health order says you have to wear masks. So if we make the health order against the law, then two people standing on a corner within six feet of each other within being violation, we wanted to aim this at just basically at the house parties. That was the purpose of making this a public nuisance law as opposed to a violation of the health order law.
This is Mayor Renanda, go ahead. I I did maybe have a couple of questions for Dan Partridge, Mayor, if that's okay. I I appreciate that you're with us again, even though we saw you very recently. Thank you. And I think the message from the health department has been persistent and consistent. And I, it's interesting the way that this part of the compliance played out. Often it was mentioned this amount of $2,500. Do I understand that to be a fear citation that would only have applied to restaurants and bars?
The approach we're currently working under for enforcement of the establishments that serve alcohol are to not rely on a criminal kind of process, but rely upon the authorities that the local health officer has, Dr. Mercelino. And so we're taking a educate once, educate twice. On the third strike, we would go to Dr. Mercelino and ask that he issue an order to close just that business until such time that they can demonstrate, you know, the ability to comply with the order. So it's really not about fines, it's about compliance. And and with the 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 penalty at the end really just being a specific closure of that establishment.
Commissioner Shipley, so I want to verify what you just said there, which is that Dr. Mercelino does have the power to stop an establishment that is estimated for all of the reasons in the health order to be in violation. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. Dan Partridge, Director of Lawrence, still just kind of pulling.
Commissioner Shipley, and I don't expect you to answer this, but then I wonder why the necessity of restraining the restaurants and businesses to the hours that have been restricted when you have a scalpel that you could use?
Well, that scalpel has to be applied against against some sort of order. If we had an order, we would, we would have a lot of ambiguity about what it is we're expecting from people. And if we aren't clear on our expectation, it's hard to then say you're closed. That's my answer.
Commissioner Shipley, thank you.
Mayor Renanda, any other questions? All right, we will open it up for public comment. First on the list is Sally Zagry, please go ahead, you have three minutes, state your name.
Okay. Hi there, can you meet?
Yes. You're very quiet, are you able to get closer to your mic? This is Mayor Renanda, we can barely, barely hear you.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. Since we're already behind a little bit, maybe we could move on to some of the other speakers and let Sally work out her technical difficulty.
Mayor Renanda, I don't know that we're behind anything, it's our meeting.
She appears to be muted.
Can you hear me or do you want, did you want somebody else to go?
There we go, Sally, we can hear you now. We could hear you. Sally, would you like us to jump to another individual and come back to you? I can see you, so if you want to shake your head one way or the other. Okay, yes, we will, here you go. Next on our list is Chris Flowers, please go ahead, you have three minutes, state your name.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. First off, I'd like to say, did anyone reach out to the college kids to get their input on this ordinance? That, I mean, because it's mainly going to be enforced on them. If we put in a four way stop sign, we we let, we mail all the neighbors because they're the ones going to be affected by it the most. So by that same logic, shouldn't we at least be reaching out to the people that are going to be affected most by this? Then also, I would just have a question, how come we can come up with this ordinance in less than a week? But the eight can't wait is taking over three months. I mean, and here's another thing I don't like. We we're talking about defunding the police and now we're talking about giving them more power. If anything, I would like to see the city commission schedule another special commission meeting where we talk about eight can't wait and we create whatever's, whatever department's going to take over the noise complaint issue, we give them this issue and instead the cops enforcing it, it's who's ever going to be enforcing the the noise complaint issues. Let's see. Let's see. Also, I want to see also language added that limits the public nuisance to being COVID-related only. Like, what about fireworks? Could a cop give someone a ticket for shooting off of fireworks, saying, well, it could land on someone's property and burn the place down? I mean, that kind of creates a public nuisance. So I'd like to see the language limited to just being COVID-related. Also, if there are now, if there's another Black Lives Matter protest, that situation, like look at the last time, they were playing music and had kind of a party atmosphere going. Next time that happens, are the cops going to ticket them? And are you commissioners, how are you going to deal with the heat when the cops start ticketing protesters? Or is this going to be something, well, it's Black Lives Matter, that's a liberal movement. So we're going to allow that, but the not taking COVID serious, that's more Republican-type thing. So we're going to enforce that more harder than we're enforcing the other stuff. And let me see. Also, what about the football? How are these large parties? How is that that much worse than the high school football game? Because I drove by that and it didn't look to be COVID-safe. So I just think it's kind of BS, like you're mainly going after one group of people. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Next on our list is Renee Kiel. Please go ahead. You have three minutes. State your name.
Mayor, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Renee messaged me that she was going to be unable to attend tonight after all and provide comment.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Sherry. Next on the list is Eric Kirkendall. Please go ahead. You have three minutes. State your name.
Eric Kirkendall, 714, excuse me, Mississippi Street, Lawrence. I want to commend the staff and the City Commission for moving so fast on this really important issue. I only want to say one thing. I think you all know it, but this is not a minor nuisance-type issue. I sent you all a link today to a news article in the Washington Post about a wedding in Maine that had just 75 people at it, 65 people at it. It resulted in 175 cases of COVID and seven deaths among people who weren't there. So I thank you. I encourage you to vote yes, and I really appreciate you doing this quickly. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you. We will go back to Sally Zagry. If you have your technological issues worked out.
Thank you, Diane. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
See, that's what I get for getting a new computer and not having like my oldest laptop ever known to man with no camera. I'm Sally Zagry, I'm Executive Director of Downtown Lawrence, Inc., and I'm also a seventeen-and-a-half-year resident of Lawrence. I had sent an email late in the day to the Commissioners and to the Agenda's email, basically stating that obviously these house parties last weekend that were on the national news were quite a shocker. And my daughter and I actually drove by those parties at about 7:30 on Saturday night. And my 15-year-old, who would love to get out of the house, believe me, she wants to get away as fast as she can. She looked as we drove past and said, you know, this is where we live. Thanks for not respecting us. There's not a mask in sight. And I thought, wow, I guess I'm doing something right because this kid gets it. And there's other unsafe behavior. And so I know right now, kind of, everybody's kind of piling on KU and the students. And I appreciate in the article that was in the paper that both our city manager and our Director of Public Health, you know, we, yes, we've talked about this for months that we want people to voluntarily comply, but that has been shown that that's not going to work. And there's other unsafe behavior that goes on. I do see it downtown. A lot of congregation, you know, you can go by Silas and Maddie's or other popular spots, and people are mixing and mingling. They've got their masks down. Maybe they're eating, drinking, maybe they're just chatting. And so that's very concerning. And it's concerning because I have a 10th grader and an 8th grader who are doing virtual school at least until January. We have immune and health issues here in the home. And we've actually been home since before spring break. And in the meantime, our businesses have tremendous restrictions that have been placed on them. And Commissioner Shipley, thank you for bringing up the curfew on cell alcohol and then restaurants and bars having to close at 10:00 PM. At least in the restaurants and bars, there's some control that can be initiated. And I do think that the vast majority of the restaurants and bars with whom I'm talking on a daily basis, they're very conscientious about enforcing the best practices. And so, you know, they've spent money, they've spent time, their business has been just drastically affected. And I would like to see, and I don't know if this ordinance is the answer or the be-all and-all, but we have to have some way that we're enforcing behavioral standards across the community. And as Commissioner Shipley mentioned, being more surgical in our approach because we, as... Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Sally. Is there anyone present in chambers who would like to give public comment on this issue?
No, ma'am.
This is Mayor Nanda. Okay, thank you. We will bring it back up to the Commission.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. You know, obviously, we had a little bit of this discussion on Tuesday night. And, you know, I had some concerns about, you know, creating a new law or creating a new crime, in particular tying that to a health order which has its own criminal statute already. It's just harder to enforce. But I do, I like this approach because, you know, we're not creating a new crime here. The crime is under state law. And what we're actually doing is allowing a way for it, someone to be ticketed and not arrested for this crime. And so to me, it's, if we vote this down tonight, it's still a crime, and a House party could still be broken up. And the problem would be, the option would be to arrest somebody or go through the long-form affidavit. And if the officers were there to break up the party, they most likely would be forced to arrest somebody if that was their intent. So by giving them this option of writing a ticket, we're actually creating a way to create enforcement, but actually doing it in a way that's, creates less confrontation, certainly creates less people going to jail, which we don't want at this point. So, I mean, I think it's a way to send a message that we intend to enforce it, but not doing it in a way that creates something new. And I guess for that same reason, I hear what Commissioner Larson is saying, and even what Commissioner Bully's saying about the sunset, about trying to tie this more closely to COVID or this incident. But again, if we sunset it, well, it's still going to be a state law the day after our municipal law sunsets. And as we're changing the wording of it, I think that creates more confusion because you have a state law that allows one, you know, that has one crime. We've now created a new and separate crime. Even if we only add two or three words to it, it's a new and separate crime. That's not the same. I'd much rather rely on the protections of state law, rely on the protections of the court cases we have, and leave the language exactly as it is in the state law. And I think that offers us maximum protection and maximum flexibility.
This is Commissioner Bully. I appreciate the conversation, the discussion, all the information. And also, thank you to staff and Unified Command for working on this and, you know, bringing it to us. I appreciate the analysis that was provided by Tony and Vice Mayor Finkeldai. I support this, but I would like to see it sunsetted to December 31st of 21. If it works, we can always continue it again, but I'm really reluctant to change the code with just this notice without having a sunset.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think that I was the most vocally critical about this on Tuesday. And so I will kind of talk about my process around this. I think that when we're looking at the values upon which we're making our decisions, that is what weighs most heavily for me because we have this value that we're working toward with the upcoming conversations around race, particularly around law enforcement and race. And this desire, at least explicitly stated by me, to pull back on law enforcement in our community and certainly offer a few opportunities for engagement that could potentially have a disparate impact on our community versus requesting more enforcement in order to move forward our public health concerns. I also acknowledge that COVID has a disparate impact on our Black and Indigenous and people of color in our community. So those are the values that I'm sitting here holding and really trying to assess where this falls on that. I certainly have concern with the definition that I heard of welfare, public welfare. As, I mean, just because it mirrors state law doesn't mean that state law is the best law or uses the best language. And I certainly think that there's room for us to improve on that. And I think that the definition of public welfare is so overbroad that it can be applied in nearly any situation, particularly talking about moral safety. That, to me, is wild as a legal definition. I also acknowledge that we have no roadmap for this conversation. We have never, as a Commission, no one sitting here tonight has been through a pandemic as a city leader. So we have a really difficult decision in front of us. And I think that, I think that this discussion is important. I think that it's a really difficult decision. And any decision that we make tonight, I know that we're making with the best of intentions, with the best interests in our community. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about the whole community, and we're doing what we can on really short notice to think about the impact on everyone in our community.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I want to thank you for keeping your eye on the ball of the broader conversation that we've been having. I think that's really important, and I will always say that dissent is important as well. I want to suggest another way of looking at this, which is that we want to think about our police in a different way, is what I hear the public saying. Or they want the police to represent different values, as you say. So rather than thinking about them as law enforcement, this is an opportunity for us to think about them as public health officers. And so I feel like this is giving an opportunity for them to fill that space. And then we can, of course, continue the dialogue around things that they should be backing off of or that we have not given them the tools for or that are not appropriate things for them to address. So I just want to offer that as another way of looking at it.
This is Mayor Nanda. I want to respond to that because I think that the very proposal that I made was that law enforcement is being asked to do things that are not their job. And certainly, being a public health officer is not in the law enforcement job description. And so I will, that directly goes against exactly what I was asking us as a city to do, which is narrow the job that they're doing, and we're expanding it with this.
Well, I would just suggest there, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, that I am going to say that I appreciate Vice Mayor Finkeldai for bringing up that we haven't actually created a new law or expanded anything. We've simply given ourselves an ability to enforce something that already exists.
This is Mayor Nanda. I guess the other piece that I wanted to address in that is that the other request was that we find other city staff to enforce ordinances that are not criminal. And this is a citation, not a criminal matter, is my... Either that, or it's subject to jail time, but this isn't a misdemeanor. It's not a felony. Is that correct? Or is it a misdemeanor?
The Attorney Tony Wheeler, it would be a misdemeanor. So I also have a issue with that.
Commissioner Larson, I appreciate the conversations we're having on this. Vice Mary, I really like the way you kind of brought it together and that this is, almost look at this as almost like a bridge-type ordinance to bring together those state laws that we can use and we can handle at the municipal level, which is a faster process from what I understand. But I'm still concerned about the broadness of it. I do support this, getting something in place so that we can have some enforcement. But I am concerned about the broad nature of how it's written, especially since all we've been talking about is we're trying to break up these parties. I'm not hearing folks really wanting to find anybody that's not wearing a mask or anything like that. So the fact that we're potentially throwing a big net out there, I just don't want any unintended consequences to happen from this. So I'll support this, but those are my, I have very strong concerns about that. I am interested in a potential sunset because I'm actually, I always like sunsets on laws myself. So I would be interested in talking about sunset. I think December 2020 is a little soon for it. But if there's any other interest in that, I'm more than happy to talk about it.
This is Commissioner Bully. I think what I said was December 31st, 21. I hope that's what I said. That's what I meant.
Commissioner Shipley, that's what I heard.
This is Commissioner Bully. And I think that having a sunset on this addresses some of the concerns that have been raised by the Mayor and Commissioner Larson, and frankly, that I share. And again, this has been done very quickly. If it turns out this is really where we want to be, it, you know, December of 21, we can say, hey, it worked. We're going to continue.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, I don't have a problem with the sunset. If others don't like that, I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Shipley, is Tony perhaps ready with that language? Sure?
Yes, I have a... To the Attorney Tony Wheeler, I apologize. I do have language. I've modified the motion. And I'll read it to you and see if this gets at your point. The I move we adopt on first and second reading, Ordinance Number 9811, "Making it a municipal offense to maintain a public nuisance or to permit a public nuisance, and establishing penalties therefore. Amended to add a subsection D to the ordinance, providing for Section 14-419 of the City Code to sunset and expire automatically at 11:59 PM on December 31, 2021." Then from that, we would include that language into the ordinance before it's published.
Commissioner Larson, I just have a question. If we pass this tonight on both first and second reading, how quickly will it go into effect?
Ordinances are effective when a summary of it is published in the official newspaper. And we've been in contact with the Journal world and believe that publication could occur Saturday, possibly. Sherry might have additional information, but that's the information I received. So then it would be effective on, once it's published in the newspaper.
Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. That's correct.
Range of publication of the summary.
We range for publication of the summary in the instance that it was adopted tonight. And they said it could be in on Saturday.
This is Mayor Nanda. I want to make it clear that clearly the house parties that are happening are a problem. And clearly, there's behavior that is complete disregard for the safety of particularly the most vulnerable folks in our community and that families have been making sacrifices for a very long time, every single one of us included, significant ones. And I understand the crisis that we're all experiencing as we're going back to work, as we're going back into our communities and trying our best to make this community remain safe as we have done really well doing for a very long time during this pandemic. I have concerns with the language in the statute. I have concerns with the values that I've already mentioned. I want to find a solution to this. I also acknowledge that there are four commissioners who are ready to go with what's written here with sunset language. I think that there's a better answer. I acknowledge the urgency that's in front of us.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, what is the better answer you're suggesting?
This is Mayor Nanda. Just like we didn't write this ordinance, I don't pretend to have those answers. I'm not a health professional. I am not a public health professional. I am someone who has a master's degree in social work in law.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I would like to mention that I had conversations with Commissioner Thelma and Commissioner Kelly today. And I appreciate their interest in this. I reached out to them to see if they had answers that would be better than this. And I had wonderful conversations with them, and they encouraged me to support this tonight, because they don't have better answers that they could tell me about today.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think one better answer is the university responding more rapidly and more aggressively. I have no control over that, and I think it has been made clear that that wouldn't continue even if, even if we were able to get the names of those individuals. Oftentimes, because of progressive discipline and an unwillingness to create a craft of policy that would directly address students who are in violation to this, there's nothing that's going to happen there. If you want what I think is actually the answer, that's the answer.
Commissioner Shipley, I do want to go back, and I wish I could have said this earlier. I do not, I do not consider this entirely focused on students. If there was a wedding or a funeral that this was happening at, and I saw it and it got out of hand, I would have the same reaction. I appreciate that most of the discussion has been around students, but there are other reasons for people to gather, Mayor, as you mentioned, some of the events that are around town. So while I agree with that statement you just made, this applies to everyone. I expect everyone here in the community to observe the order and adhere to what we've all worked so hard, as you say, to sacrifice. So that'll be harder for me. And as I said, I see the constraints that KU are under that possibly make it difficult or impossible for them to do more for us.
This is Commissioner Bulley, and Mayor, I appreciate your mentioning the vulnerable people in our community. There are vulnerable people in our community that are relying on us, relying on us to do what we can to ensure their safety during this pandemic, and that's what we need to do.
This is Mayor Nanda. Is there further discussion? Does someone want to make a motion?
This is Commissioner Bulley. I'd like to make the motion that was read by City Attorney Tony Wheeler.
Commissioner Shipley, second.
This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second from Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda Nay passes four to one with the mayor voting against.
That is the extent of our agenda this evening.
Mayor Nanda, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, and there were two actions suggested. There's also the MOU.
Shall we do a second motion? I wasn't, I didn't pick up that Tonys didn't include that.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I'll try again.
Why don't we pass that motion? Do the separate motion for the MOU.
Well, this is Commissioner Bulley. I think we already passed that motion. I'll try with the second motion, if that's okay with everybody.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. That is correct. The other motion has been voted on, and so we'll just need someone to make a motion on the other piece.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the University of Kansas and other appropriate parties for the enforcement of applicable state laws and/or municipal offenses related to maintaining a public nuisance or permitting a public nuisance.
Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. That is the extent of our agenda. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Larson, I move to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Bulley, I second.
Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. Thank you all for your work. Have a good night.